We'll call the meeting to order. Roll call.
You want to?
Everybody sign in?
Yeah, mine's not. Oh, I'm not signed in.
Everybody sign in?
I am not.
Yep, I is.
How come mine's not going in? I am. Oh, yes, I did have it. I got too much on the table here.
You said it.
We have nine, Mr. Mayor, we have nine present, zero absent.
All right, stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The agenda has been prepared and I either need a motion to present or amend.
Mayor, yeah, we need you to speak closer to the microphone. We cannot hear you over here.
All right, I reminded the council of the same and I didn't do it, I'm sorry.
Marys?
Yes.
Would like to add on to the consent agenda, the labor agreement between the City of Wilmer and AFSCME Council number 65.
Where did my pen go? Where are you adding it? Where are you adding it?
Adding it on to the consent items, so it would be item H. It's the labor agreement between the City of Wilmer and AFSCME Council number 65 that was approved and it's for January 1st, 2023 to December 31st, 2025.
All right, it's added.
Motion to approve the agenda as amended?
Second.
We have a motion to approve as amended and it's been seconded.
That motion carries eight ayes, zero nays.
Thank you. Next is a proclamation for welcoming week of 2023 and I will read the proclamation and we have Pablo and three people that are part of welcoming week?
Five.
Five? Okay, five people, so we welcome you to here. I hope you can hear me. I'll read it for welcoming week of 2023. Whereas our community's success depends on making sure that all residents feel welcome here. Today, new residents are a vital part of our community, bringing fresh perspectives and new ideas, starting businesses and contributing to the vibrant diversity that we all value. And whereas this week, we honor the spirit of unity that is bringing neighbors together across the City of Wilmer during welcoming week. I invite all residents of Wilmer to join this movement of communities nationwide by renewing our commitment to our core American values and by taking action in the spirit of welcoming. By working together, we can achieve greater prosperity and make our community the kind of place where diverse people from around the world feel valued and want to put down roots. And whereas regardless of where we are born or what we look like, we are residents united in our efforts to build a stronger community by recognizing the contributions that we all make to create a vibrant culture and growing economy. We make our community more prosperous and more inclusive to all who call it home. And whereas let us come together to build communities where every resident has the opportunity to contribute at their best. Let us come together to create more prosperous communities and to reaffirm that Minnesota still stands as a beacon of freedom and opportunity. Now therefore, I Doug Reese, the mayor of Wilmer, do hereby proclaim the week of September 9th, 2023 welcoming week. I call upon the people of Minnesota to join together to build stronger communities across Minnesota. Pablo, you want to give us a brief of what is going to take place?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we are excited to be able to celebrate the diversity of our community by having this event on Saturday. It's called welcoming week, which is part of a national organization, welcoming America, that encourages small communities throughout the country and now the world to be able to celebrate the new immigrants that are coming to our communities. It is also a time to invite all the members of our community to create a sense of belonging. We know that there are pockets in our community, members who sometimes feel isolated or who are not feeling that they belong here. And this is an event that we are inviting everyone to come and join us to celebrate this event and to welcome one another. I have said in the past that this is a community that is very committed to our immigrant community, not only the new ones, but also the older ones. This is a community that has a lot of history with immigration and we want to celebrate that fact. Thank you for supporting, Mayor, and members of the council, to our efforts. We hope to see you on Saturday in the afternoon and if you cannot be there, make sure that you are inviting your neighbors and your friends and family to the event. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Pablo. Thank you for your work. All right. Consent items. Judy?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, on tonight's consent agenda, we have our council's approval, the city council minutes of August 21st, Wilmer Municipal Utilities Commission minutes of August 28th, the accounts payable report for August 17th through August 30th, consideration of estate one day to four day temporary on sale liquor license permit for Foxhole Brew House Incorporated, Pheasants Forever Minnesota Habitat Fund lawful gambling application, a resolution for the wastewater aerator gearbox repair, a memorandum of understanding with Rice Hospital, and also with the addition to the agenda, the AFSCME general unit contract approval.
All right. This is the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to pull item H, the labor agreement, for further conversation. Then I would move to approve the remainder of the consent agenda.
Second. Okay, we got a motion and a second to approve A through G. A through G. Do we take on your first or do we take the vote? Oh, okay.
Michael, I'm just waiting on you to vote. That passes, eight ayes, zero nays.
All right. Justin?
I was just hoping, since we were just handed a 25-page document without a whole lot of indication of what's in here, if someone from staff could give us a brief overview of changes. I know it's not the first time, sure, it's not the first time we've seen something like this, but the first time we've seen the final version, can you run us through what it is we're looking at?
It is no different than anybody else's. It's the 443 for wage increases and I think they had a slight variation of increase for clothing and that was about it. And then they take on the health insurance like we've asked them to, so health insurance included in that, the city will only have a two and a half percent increase. The employee will take on the rest of the health insurance increase for 2024 and 2025.
Thank you. I'll move to approve the labor agreement between the city and AFSCME.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second to approve the labor agreement between the City of Wilmer and AFSCME Council number 65.
That motion carries eight ayes, zero nays.
Thank you. I think I need to explain to the people that are watching on TV, we're, it's very warm in here, the AC isn't working, we've got fans running all over, so if you're having a hard time hearing us, I apologize, but we will try and keep close to the microphones so that you can hear us. We got open forum. Do we have anybody?
Mr. Mayor, there's no one that has signed up to speak during open forum.
All right, thank you. Public hearings. Justice, did you want to kick it off?
Yeah. All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So tonight's the public hearing for the Second Avenue easement vacation.
I should open the hearing first and then you can go ahead, so I'll open the hearing. Sir, that's okay, sorry.
Oh, okay.
Go ahead.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So tonight's the public hearing for the Second Avenue easement vacation. So what's an easement vacation, where, and then staff recommendations? So like I kind of briefly overviewed last time, so this is going to be on the Hendrix edition on Second Avenue, which is just north of Highway 12, west of, east of Stacy's or west of Stacy's, I keep doing that. But yeah, so the utility easement vacation, so normally in the plating process, it's standard operating procedure that utilities ask for and existing utility easement around the boundary of the existing plating lots, and so that's on the Hendrix, Hendrix edition goes all the way, the perimeter, all the way around the perimeter of the lots created. And so now that they're looking to replat, they want the utility easement vacated and they are going to replat it and then there will be new utility easements granted, but like I said, so in this process, in the development process, it's pretty standard if there are old utility easements that are encumbering and an older plat, when they replat, they will ask that the new plat be unencumbered and have the utility easements vacated. And so then this is just a map of kind of like from the GIS of where this is at, so you can see 20th Street Southeast and then Highway 12, east to the south there, like I said, just kind of west of Stacy's. And then the recommendation from staff is to vacate the utility easement around the boundary of the old Hendrix edition. So with that, Mr. Mayor, I turn it over to you for any questions.
All right. Is there any public comment on the proposed vacation? No public hearing, I'll bring it up to, well, close the public hearing and open it to the city council discussion.
I move to approve the vacation easement.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second, any further discussion? If not, go ahead and vote.
That motion carries eight ayes, zero nays.
All right. Then I'll open the hearing on the ordinance amending the general business district. Justice?
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. All right, so I want to be clear on this one. So tonight, there are two of these, and this is the first one. So this one is the general business district amendments. So what's new, where at, and then staff recommendations. So like I was saying, so this is the first of two and so this is the general business district, so on this map, that's up and in front of you should include this outline of just kind of the general zoning of the City of Wilmer and then what's off to the left, that's kind of in hyphenated, black lines are the, I'm bad, there you go. Anyway, so the proposed amendments are going to affect like the general corridor, kind of like how we discussed, north of Wilmer Avenue, all the way up to Litchfield Avenue, kind of along First Street, and then there are other segmented portions of well, along Highway 12 East, and then we also have another section that's kind of up by, on Lakeland Avenue, right in front of Trentwood Estates. And so that is where, and then the proposed amendments, so include things like the tighter setbacks, and so tighter setbacks were something that staff was approached and petitioned on to the planning commission is that someone wanted to build an awning on one of their buildings on First Street and that they wanted no setbacks on First Street. And so there was a little pushback on that, a little discussion, I think kind of at the planning commission level, planning commissioners heard out their presentation, essentially they went up and did like an audit all the way up and down First Street, and if you notice on First Street, some of the signs are really, really close and some of the buildings are really close, and so there is some of the setbacks on First Street, the existing ones are as tight as two and three feet in some areas. And so one of the things that changed is the setback off of First Street is now going to be five feet instead of the, I think it was like 25, which there's a lot of nonconforming ones just because eventually, there used to be a two-lane, two-lane road and when it was expanded to a four and five-way road in some places, it encroached upon the existing buildings. So that's why there are a lot of nonconforming setbacks along First Street. And then housing is allowed in the general business district, and I think this is more of a, currently right now, it's a conditional use process, but now more of a streamlined process and then consolidated retail uses. And so one of the things that, if you look at like the working document, there's a lot of things that are scratched out and it looks like, well, this is the commercial district, we wanted this to be walkable, we wanted smaller footprints and more walkability in this area, why would you cross these things out? So the reason for that is that now we've consolidated them into general retail uses, that way it's a less cumbersome process and people don't have to keep coming to us and asking for rezonings for this to happen. And we just felt that it would be better if we just kind of allowed things under a general retail in this area to prevent people having to come to us and request text amendments just because things aren't explicitly stated in the zoning ordinance, like I said, that happens all the time, and so we'd rather just get away from that, as I said, to kind of allow things to be done under general retail. And then smaller footprints. So smaller footprints, just kind of looking at the lot size, minimum lots are a lot smaller than the other general business, other general business district areas. And so like I said, I mean, the thought process behind that was more walkable, a lot more retail friendly, and then also one of the things was we got rid of a lot of the uses that were much more industrial in nature and those have a home south of Wilmer Avenue and then along Highway 12, east and west, just kind of like the more industrial areas in town. And so this is moving towards creating a walkable commercial corridor along First Street from Wilmer Avenue North all the way to Litchfield Avenue. And so I guess with that, turn it over to you, Mr. Mayor, for any questions.
Thank you, Justice. Any public comments? Being, seeing no one, I'll close the hearing and open it up to the council for discussion. Julie?
I'm looking at some of the things that were stricken, so like N for clothing stores?
Yep.
Where, the pizza shop?
Yeah, Legacy on First and all that?
Yes.
Like Primrose and all that, yep.
That's already a clothing store, that's, so that wouldn't be allowed?
Would be allowed under general retail, and so that's one of the things. So, so right now, like we have like almost, I mean, like 50, 60 separate uses that all kind of, and I would say like 30 or 40 of them fit under general retail. And like, and so then the idea is that people get discouraged about what can be done and what is allowed because it's not explicitly stated. And so our idea was to take out a lot of like this explicit language and these niche uses and then allow them under an umbrella of general retail, that way we could, that way it's a much, much more straightforward and I think that's how, that's how zoning's normally done, instead of like it must be explicitly stated and that's how you get all these write-ins and these text amendment requests. And so like I said, that was not done in an effort to disallow things, that was done in an effort to streamline the process and make it easier for people to permit stuff.
Makes sense. So a pet store could open up, it's just under general retail?
Yep, correct.
Perfect.
Yep, and so what we're, and so one of the things that we're relying on in this, in this district is more the footprint of the building. If the footprint of the building dictates that they need more space and what's allowed in this district, they'd rather locate in general business three or general business two somewhere else. And so like I said, general retail is something that we want to allow and encourage, we just wanted to get rid of all these niche uses and write-ins in the zoning district.
Councilmember Broderfield?
I want to talk a little bit on setbacks. How's that going to be beneficial for that being right on First Street?
Yeah, so I would tell you that it's not going to operate much differently. I think one of, one of the things, like I said, I mean, they, they did a really good presentation several months ago now, they identified over 20 structures that were within five feet of First Street already on, like on First Street. And so that was the reason that they came and they wanted five feet, just because I think with the awning that they wanted, it came in at eight or something like that. But so that was petitioned on a petition text amendment, that's one of the things I'm talking about, one of the requests that people make. But I think from a functional standpoint, wouldn't function much differently and I think also, I mean, the general idea, I mean, we want to create walkable districts and kind of encourage people to kind of be out walking around, kind of visiting stores. I mean, you want buildings closer to the street to prevent people from seeing a bunch of cars and all this other stuff. So I mean, like, I mean, you want eyes on the street, I mean, it's a, like an urban design concept. But I, but I would say, I mean, how it functions now would not function, function much differently because, I mean, there are already structures that close on the street because of the expansion of First Street to four lanes from two.
Because I have some concerns on that, because I know at ABC Vacuum, I think his sign has been, cars hit that twice, and back in the 80s, I don't know if I'm recalling this right, but I think Sam might took off KFC at one point in time and they had to rebuild. So I'm just wondering what the more traffic we're getting, if it's going to cause more accidents, you know, to buildings and stuff like that, having a little, that much closer.
I think if people are hitting stationary objects, I think we have other concerns, not just setbacks. I don't think setbacks are going to mitigate that. But like, but like I said, I mean, they're already, in their presentation at the planning commission, I mean, they included, I mean, there were over a dozen structures already within the five-feet setback of First Street, whether that be signs, buildings, et cetera. So that, it wouldn't, it wouldn't function much differently.
Other comments, questions? If not, I'm looking for a motion.
I'll move to adopt, sign a number and publish general business district.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Rick?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So this is just First Street, east side and west side?
Yep.
And Litchfield Avenue.
Yep, and then there's that pocket up on Lakeland Avenue, up on Lakeland Drive, that when we discussed it at the planning commission level about this rezoning, we've had several people, because those lots were for sale and several have been purchased, people like to build housing on it, we've gotten some calls about storage units, but I mean, the planning commission is strongly in favor of maintaining residential there. So I, I think eventually there will be a rezone request for that and I think that's something that the planning commission would be in favor in, of maintaining that to be residential. So yes, this will affect only First Street and then Highway 12 East and West there, like in the, very, very tight, and I can go back to the map, kind of, you can see what we're talking about.
So nothing on Second Street?
Nope.
So if we grant this and if you have a party that lives on Second Street and their property is adjacent to it, they have no recourse of saying they don't want a retail store?
Oh, okay, yeah, yeah, yeah. So thank you, thank you for asking that question, that was a pretty big sticking point for the planning commission. So I misspoke. So the, so that lower part that we rezoned earlier in the year from our four to general business, because the majority of it was already high-density housing, will be rezoned to general business. But in the uses, one of the things that is there is the, there's several, it's several caveats to it, but essentially the residential, the single-family houses on Second Street there, just south of Alina Avenue for single-family housing, if anything were to happen to them, they can rebuild and it isn't allowed conditional use for those, for those houses. Like, and that was a caveat that the planning commission explicitly wanted, that was on the public hearing at the planning commission level, people came out and that they were concerned about and that we made sure we put that in there. So this is not an attempt to turn that block into commercial, we would like to see that remain residential, it's just the, everything south of Alina Ave, on Second Avenue, on Second Street there, is high-density residential, just a budding single-family housing, but they can rebuild in the event that there is a fire, if they need to resell, or if they want to demolish the house and then rebuild it, that will be allowed, single-family housing is allowed there through a conditional use permit.
Okay, so if there is a fire, they can rebuild the same footprint then?
Correct.
They can't change it then? So if it's a two-story house, they can't build a Rambler?
No, no, they can, they can, yeah. So a single-family housing, yeah, 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 so it's not, it's not, and it's not prescriptive on that granular level for a single-family housing, I mean, it's, it's for that, for that specific block, it is carved into the ordinance that on Second Street, south of Alina Avenue, that they can rebuild a single-family house, that it is allowed through a conditional use permit. And so like I said, I mean, that was a major sticking point for the planning commissioners and like several people came out to speak for that at the public hearing at the planning commission level. And so that, that is why, I mean, it is intentionally put in there to operate that way.
Okay, because that's pretty important if they have a loan on the property. Mortgage companies do not like to see residential homes in commercial zoned areas. And one of the questions that ask when appraisal is done, can they rebuild?
Yep, they can, yep.
And that's written in the?
Yep, carved out.
And it's easy to find?
Yep.
So.
Councilmember Nelson?
Thank you, Marys. I have one more question on the five-foot setback. I'm assuming the five-foot setback is for signage, or what are you going to allow five feet from the street? And, and the reason I ask that is we already have a couple places where there are signs where it is literally hard to see around the sign and they are right up against the sidewalk, so that's a, is it still going to allow for visibility?
Yes, great question. So even though there's a five-foot setback, this was another question at the public hearing level. Even with the five-foot setback, throughout town, does not matter what the prevailing setback is for your district. If you are on a corner lot and visibility is a concern, there is a visibility sight triangle that must be maintained on your property that is in excess to the setback. And so if you are on the corner, you will not be able to just put like a, a building will not be able to locate there, that is not a part of your buildable area in your lot, on a corner lot, that goes for signs and that goes for structures as well, and so that will not be allowed. And so for the ones where we do have visibility, visibility issues on a corner, like they will not be able to build a structure or build a sign in that, we'll just say a visibility sight line.
Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, roll call.
That motion passes, seven ayes, one nay. Councilmember Fagerly casts the nay vote.
All right. I'll open a public hearing to consider.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, we need a motion for the published by summary.
Oh, okay.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second to publish summary. Go ahead and vote.
Just waiting on Councilmember Fagerly, do you want to cast a voice vote?
Yes.
That motion carries eight ayes, zero nays.
All right. Then we'll open the hearing to consider an ordinance to create the general business three district.
Once again, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So we'll go over what's new and where this is at, and then staff recommendation. So the proposed amendments would affect the areas, and it's like magenta purple here. And so the general business three would be predominantly on the outskirts of Highway twelve east, Highway twelve west, uh, south, seventy-one south of twenty-three, as it bends going west there, and then north Highway seventy-one, north of town, just kind of on the lakefront. And so this was done just because, I mean, these areas are already kind of industrial in nature. I mean, you got a lot, a larger footprint businesses out there. I mean, you got everything from manufacturing, warehousing, et cetera, going on in these corridors. And just for a staff side, I mean, we really wanted to make a distinction between what would be allowed on First Street, what would be allowed south of Wilmer Avenue, and then what would be allowed in these areas as well. So that was the distinction for us. Like I said, I mean, these are kind of already at like the land use patterns in these areas. So then the bigger changes, like what would be different for this one? Bigger lots would be allowed, just because, I mean, like, like I was talking about, I mean, already what's happening in these areas are large lot, outdoor storage, large, I mean, they got a lot of large inventories, not like they're selling trinkets in some of these places. And then just generally less restrictive. I think the most restrictive one would be everything that's happening on First Street, north of Wilmer Avenue, and in between Litchfield Avenue. And then, like I said, is it, like, the intention is to formalize the existing land use for what's going on for a lot of these areas. So like I said, we just really wanted to make a distinction between general business, general business two, and the general business three. And general business three lends itself to a much more industrial side of the use spectrum. So staff recommendation would be to approve the creation of the general business three district. And I also want to be clear on this, so this is, uh, the last one was an amendment to the existing district. This is a creation of the general business three district. And so there's still need to be, land would still need to be rezoned into the general business three district. This would just create the general business three district. So then with that, Mr. Mayor, I'll turn it over to you for any questions.
All right, thank you, Justice. Any public comment on this? Being no public comment, I'll close the hearing and open it up to our discussion on the city council.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, we got a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. No further discussion, go ahead and vote.
Audrey.
No, Audrey, go ahead.
Just clarification, it was hard to see the colors on the map, like down First Street. Is there, is, is that a color, the same color as what you're referencing?
No, yeah, okay, yeah, yeah. So in the bottom right-hand corner of the map shows, I guess, what is extended First Street, just, but that's south of Highway twenty-three. And so that's where Ziegler Cat is, West Central Sanitation and all those. Like I said, I mean, much more industrial, uh, in nature than like the rest of First Street. And so that's not, yeah, yeah, so, so that is extended First Street, but not like where Target, or like where Walgreens or Hospital is.
Thank you.
Okay, we got a motion and a second, go ahead and vote.
Just waiting on Councilmember Fagerly. Do you want to do a voice vote?
Yeah, I'm locked out, but I'll vote.
Yes, okay, that motion passes, eight ayes, zero nays.
That passes. We need a motion to publish by summary.
So moved. Second.
We got a motion and a second to publish by summary. Go ahead and vote. Give her a thumbs up.
Rick, a yes. Eight ayes, zero nays.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Justice. Next is our regular business, and first off, it's the 2023 legislative update from Bradley Peterson. Welcome, Brad.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Reese, and members of the council. Great to be here, uh, in Wilmer with you. My name is Bradley Peterson, here on behalf of the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities. I'm with the firm of Flaherty and Hood, and we do the legislative advocacy and organizational management for, uh, the coalition. I've given you all a packet that's got, uh, a lot of information in it. I'll be referencing some of it, I think, in deference to the fact that I know you've got a, a couple of hefty items on your agenda coming up, and, and the heat, I'll give you the Reader's Digest version of, of my usual presentation. But if there are any items that you, uh, want to ask questions about, do, uh, please do so. As a reminder, the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities, uh, has about a hundred and ten members outside of the seven-county metro area, uh, working with cities like Wilmer, specifically on issues related to things like local government aid, economic development, uh, environmental and regulatory issues, uh, transportation, annexation and land use. And so, uh, we had a big session, this last session, um, and it was definitely dominated by, uh, two things. One, the seventeen billion and change surplus that the state had, as well as the fact that, uh, all three levers of decision-making at the, the state government level, the two bodies of the legislature and the governor's office were in the hands of the, the DFL, which, uh, referred to themselves often, and were referred to often as, as the trifecta, and so you'll probably hear me use that, uh, phrase quite a bit. Going into session, our, uh, major priorities, uh, were a local government aid increase and , uh, changes to the LGA formula, um, as well as a robust bonding bill that would, uh, meet the needs of communities across greater Minnesota related to things like wastewater infrastructure, roads and bridges, um, other infrastructure to support economic development. So it was a session, I think, very much unlike any other in terms of, uh, the DFL trifecta being in charge. From the get-go, from the, the sound of the gun in January to, uh, the third week in May, uh, they went all out, uh, passing all measure of, uh, legislation in addition to dealing with the state budget. They never took a break. The volume and velocity of legislation that was passed, uh, at the legislature was, uh, really astounding, and unlike anything that, uh, that, uh, I think I've ever seen. You know, like anything, some of it might be good, some of it might be bad from your perspective, um, but it was a lot. And I think that, um, it certainly, uh, influenced the character of the session. When you've got control of all three, uh, levers of the legislative process, you can pretty much do whatever you want, and they did, and they did a whole lot, a whole lot of things. From the CGMC perspective, like I said, our highest priority was, uh, local government aid. One of the things that is in your, uh, packet, uh, is a bar graph here that, uh, shows a little bit of what, um, happened with LGA. The far-left, uh, column there is what your appropriation here in Wilmer would have been had there been no law changes and no new money. You had our proposal, which we were asking for a hundred and fifty million dollars to go into the LGA program, as well as, uh, some formula updates. And then you see what the House, the Governor and the Senate did, and then the final outcome. On the formula pieces, on the backside of this, uh, uh, piece of paper, it does kind of go into depth on that. Uh, it does happen about every ten years or so, that the LGA formula gets a little re-look after the decennial census, and with the passage of time, to make sure that all of the inputs into it still make sense, or still the things, uh, that we want to, uh, measure in terms of the LGA formula. And I can certainly get deeper into those if you would like, um, but there's a, I think a fairly decent, basic explanation, uh, for you there. In the end, uh, despite the fact that, uh, the Governor and the Senate, uh, the DFL Senate came in a little low, uh, in terms of the LGA, uh, their LGA ask, um, and we were critical of them for that, believe me. We came away with eighty million dollars added to the local government aid, uh, program ongoing. So whereas last year, the appropriation was five hundred and sixty-four million dollars a year, we've crossed that out and written in six hundred and forty-four million dollars a year, and that's what it will be going forward, um, here, hardwired into law, uh, until the legislature decides to change it. Um, I was actually surprised when I looked at the, the chart for Wilmer, uh, the, the growth from about five point two projected under the old law versus six point one million under the new law. Frankly, I, I, I thought that had to have been a misprint. Uh, it was a bigger increase than I've seen for many cities, and I went back and checked it twice, and that is, uh, indeed, uh, the increase that you're getting. And so I think, uh, some healthy, uh, boost from the state there. The other thing I want to talk about is the bonding bill. In 2020, uh, that would have been the last time that we had a bonding bill. Uh, there should have been one in 2022, if you kind of keep to the regular schedule. Uh, the legislature was unable to get to it, and so there was all sorts of expectations that in 2023, there'd be a bonding bill to take care of water and wastewater infrastructure, roads, uh, publicly-owned buildings, parks and trails, uh, as well as any number of individual projects. The House passed a bill, uh, with bipartisan support, because you need both parties in order to pass a bonding bill, early in session, and we saw that as a very encouraging, uh, fact, that the Democrats and the Republicans in the House were able to work together to pass a bonding bill to meet these needs, understanding that these are what their communities needed. Uh, the Senate came along a little bit more slowly, because the Senate Republicans wanted to use, uh, what they thought of as their leverage, uh, to negotiate other items in terms of nursing home funding and tax breaks and that sort of thing. And it went right up to, uh, the last, uh, day or so before a deal was ultimately brokered. And we spent a lot of time, uh, especially working on the Republican side on the Senate, to make sure that they understood that a bonding bill was really, really needed, uh, for their constituents. And with that came some additional nursing home money for communities across the state. So I think that was a good thing. Uh, in that bonding bill was a record amount of funding for water and wastewater infrastructure, lots of money for roads and bridges, uh, lots of money for parks and trails, lots of money for housing. And as I mentioned, uh, all sorts of, um, individual local projects across the state. I think we are hopeful, because they were off their schedule last year, uh, and last year was kind of a makeup for 2022. Twenty twenty-four, going into this next legislative session, should be a year for a big bonding bill. Um, I know Wilmer has put in a couple of submissions. Uh, I know the House and Senate Capital Investment Committees have been touring the state this, uh, this fall and, or the summer, and will be continuing into the fall and winter. So I think that'll be one of the major pieces, uh, of discussion here in 2024. Couple of other items I want to highlight, um, that we worked on. One was, uh, we worked with a number of the, uh, trade unions, uh, and, uh, another environmental group, uh, to secure two hundred and forty million dollars, uh, for lead line, uh, identification in our communities and removal. Uh, the federal EPA is requiring that all cities have some sort of inventory of their, uh, lead service lines, drinking water lines, uh, by October of 2024, so about a year from now, completed. Um, and then that there's progress made towards, uh, replacing those. And so the two hundred and forty million dollars will do both. It'll help communities do the inventory, and it will help communities do the, uh, replacement of those. Uh, it's really just a down payment. I think the Department of Health had indicated that to get the job done totally for the state of Minnesota, you'd need about eight hundred million dollars. And so I think this will be a recurring discussion over the next several years in terms of lead line service, uh, service line removal. Uh, but we were very happy to be part of a strong coalition that was able to secure the initial two hundred and forty million dollars for that. The last thing I want to talk about is one of the, uh, I think, impacts of the, the trifecta. We spent a lot of time, more time than I would have thought, uh, really playing defense on a number of issues for greater Minnesota, uh, especially when it came to, uh, things around environmental regulatory issues that would have impacted, uh, development. There were a number of proposals, uh, that, you know, are, were certainly well-intentioned, I'm sure, uh, in terms of their outcomes and goals, um, but, uh, the devil is always in the details when you're talking about legislation. And when you looked at what was on paper and what the, uh, DFL majorities were putting forward, really didn't work very well in a greater Minnesota context. And so we spent a lot of time, uh, trying to shape these proposals, tried to kill these proposals, trying to figure out, how can we make these proposals better, still achieve their goals, but not harm the economic viability of our communities? And in some of those cases, we won some, and in some of those cases, we lost some. But I think it's going to be an issue of ongoing vigilance, that we're going to have to be there at the legislature, reading all of these bills, making sure that, um, they, uh, regulations that are being passed do not hamper greater Minnesota's ability to grow and create thriving communities. One in particular that we were able to, uh, stop and defeat with the help of, uh, the House Republicans, uh, was a proposal in the, uh, the environment area on the public facilities authority, that would have really upset the apple cart in terms of how the infrastructure dollars that the PFA doles out to communities across the state would have been, uh, calculated. It would have pushed a lot more money towards, uh, the metro area, and it would have made, uh, a lot of communities, or would have left a lot of communities in greater Minnesota wanting. We were able to defeat that, uh, in committee, get it pulled out of the, uh, jobs bill before it went forward. But there's all these kinds of things, uh, that we are on the lookout for, for greater Minnesota. And I think next year, as you, uh, look at what their tasks will be, they start February twelfth, I think there will be a lot more policy coming from, uh, the Governor and the trifecta, hopefully a bonding bill. Uh, my, uh, working assumption, gut feeling, uh, is that there will be some amount of surplus next year, and so there will be all sorts of discussions about how to spend that money. Um, and obviously, we'll be there, uh, trying to ensure that a good chunk of that money goes to meet the needs of, of greater Minnesota communities. We've also got, uh, an election. Every member of the State House of Representatives, all hundred and thirty-four of them are up for election next year. Senator Klobuchar is up for an election, and I think there's a presidential election that nobody's particularly looking forward to, but is going to happen nonetheless. Um, and so as that process goes forward, we'll be spending a lot of time, uh, educating legislative candidates on, uh, CGMC's issues and, and the issues important to their communities. Uh, also in your packet is, uh, save the date for a couple of upcoming events. Uh, we've got our Fall Conference, which is actually going to be happening here in Wilmer, uh, in, uh, the middle of November. That's where we kind of roll up our sleeves and get ready for the, uh, next legislative session. It's very much a working meeting, um, and so hopefully, uh, you can all, can join us for that. Uh, then in March, we've got our Legislative Day, uh, at the Capitol, where we bring folks to, uh, the Capitol, we brief you on the issues, we talk about the landscape and what's going on, and then set you loose to, uh, lobby your legislators. And then our Summer Conference this year is in Wilmer and St. Joseph. They are co-hosting it, uh, at the end of July, and I think that's going to be a great event, and a lot closer than last year's, uh, or the summer's event up in Thief River Falls, so hopefully, uh, we'll see some of you there. With that, I'd be more than happy to pause and take any comments or answer any questions.
Thank you, Brad. We look forward to seeing you in November.
Absolutely.
If not before.
For sure, for sure.
Any questions for Brad? Well, thank you for being here.
Absolutely, thanks for having me, and, uh, good luck with the rest of your meeting.
We promise the heat will be working in November.
All right, the next, the next item is, uh, project final for epitopics?
Yes.
Yes, tonight we have Spencer Johnson instead of Jared Volge. Got the number one guy instead.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, thank you for having me this evening. Like, uh, Leslie said, I am standing in for Jared this evening. Uh, but in your packets, on page eighty-five, you will find an item regarding accepting the, oops, sorry, item regarding accepting the, uh, Epitopics Santory Sewer and Water Main Project. The construction for the project has been completed, and as a result, a resolution accepting the project and authorizing final payment has been prepared, uh, on page eighty-six of your packet. I'll just summarize this, there is a final change order regarding the project as well, uh, which just reconciles the final contract amount to the, uh, final contracted, final constructed amount, uh, and resulted in a deduction of fifteen dollars and ninety cents for a total contract amount of one million, four hundred eighty-nine thousand, six hundred eighty-three dollars and sixty-eight cents. So of that amount, one million, three hundred ninety-nine thousand, four hundred nineteen dollars and thirty-eight cents have been previously paid, leaving a total amount due to the contractor of ninety thousand, two hundred sixty-four dollars, thirty cents. With that, we recommend that the resolution be adopted and the, um, project be accepted.
Well, thank you.
Are there any questions?
It's been a long process.
Yeah.
It's taken a long time. Council, do you have any questions, or? We need a, uh, resolution introduced if you don't have any more questions.
I'll make a motion to make the final payment of $90,264.30.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. Any other questions? Audrey?
Do we need to approve the change order at the same time or is that part of, part of it?
That'd be part of it. Yep.
Yep. That's part of it.
We'll make that part of it because that would include the $15.90 we got back.
Yes. Yep. That's all part of the resolution.
Okay. Any other questions?
I do have one more item on that. And that would be for the, so since there was grant funding involved with the project, there was so much, some, that went so far, but then there was a total cost from the city of approximately $255,998. And there were two funds that were discussed to, for that to be paid with through the city funds, one of which would be the Industrial Park Fund and the other one through ARPA funding. Staff is seeking counsel direction regarding the funding source for the city's portion of the project funding for the Epitopics project.
So is this a separate?
Yes, that could be a separate motion as to where the funding of $255,000 would come from.
Should we get the results on that first vote?
Did everybody vote?
The first one passes eight ayes, zero nays.
All right. Now let's have a motion to cover the, the additional.
Where the funding source of the $255,998 would. It was a couple of years ago when this process started and there was a sale of land at that time to RDC National Land Sale, which was the land sale for the FedEx Building. And that resulted in $249,750 that went into the industrial fund. And tomorrow, we close on the MV rail sales. So our Industrial Park funding has plenty of funding to, to use this money for the infrastructure. And then the ARPA money can go to other things like public safety or technology.
Audrey?
I'll make a motion to use the money from the land sales from the Industrial Park Fund to cover the cost.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. Any other discussion? If not, roll call.
The motion carries eight ayes, zero nays.
Well, thank you.
Thank you. Have a great evening.
All right. All right, the next item is a final payment for Civic Center Roof Over the Roof Project. Rob, are you going to tell us about the roof?
Yes, Mayor, my other counsel, tonight's request is to adopt the resolution to authorize final payment to Marcus Construction at an amount of $34,867.46 for the roof at the Civic Center Roof Over Roof Project. As you probably know, this is the roof project that happened when LSE came in to look at the 81 addition. That's kind of where the parking wreck offices are at, in the bathroom. They're saying that it wasn't structurally sound. So we looked at it and we developed a plan with Marcus as a construction bulletin in the Event Center project. And so we were able to do that with the same vendors that we had for that project. Kudos to Marcus. They gave us a great budget. We came in under budget for it. And all this was funded through the CIP plan, not through the investment over project.
Okay. Any questions? We need a resolution.
I'll move to make the final payment of $34,867.46 to complete the roof for complete payments to Marcus.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. Any other discussion? If not, roll call.
The motion carries eight ayes, zero nays.
Okay. Thanks, Rob. The next item, consider termination of an agreement between the City of Willmer and the Willmer School District for School Resource Officers. Chief Feld.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. First of all, I want to apologize to you and my high school speech instructor that because there's so many important points I want to make tonight, I'm going to be largely reading it instead of giving a speech. But the item before you for consideration this evening is the recommended termination of the agreement between the City of Willmer and the Willmer School District for School Resource Officers. This is both an unforeseen and unfortunately unnecessary request under our current circumstances. On August 11th, our agency first became aware of legislative changes that were enacted into law under the corporal punishment statute and how it directly affects our staff assigned as school resource officers. Once we learned of the changes, our office immediately contacted the Willmer Schools. They indicated this was the first they had learned of the changes. A few days later, they said the Minnesota Department of Education had then notified them. For Willmer PD, guidance was sought from the Minnesota Chiefs of Police Association, Minnesota Sheriff's Association, Minnesota Police and Peace Officers Association, Minnesota Department of Education, the League of Minnesota Cities, and the Willmer City Attorney. I want to briefly outline those changes and the effects on our agency. The first is the new designation by statute that school resource officers working under contract are specifically classified as agents of the district. While our SROs remain Willmer Police Department employees, the City Attorney's Office also confirms the agent of the district status when under contract and the city being reimbursed for their services by the schools. As agents of the district, SROs are now limited on performing certain common physical control techniques that have been time-tested, medically-tested, and tactically-accepted as control techniques when performed as instructed and under policy. Those new limitations on techniques include, first one is removing the ability of an officer to place an individual in a prone position, even on a combative or violent student unless preventing bodily harm or death. Prone positioning is a very common and necessary technique that officers are trained on to briefly restrain an individual for handcuffing before moving them to a sitting, standing, or a position on their side. The prone position helps officers more quickly gain control of a combative person with less chance of them being injured, the officer, or others. This also lessens the officer being forced to move to a higher level of force that could cause injury. Second, the new limitations remove the ability of an officer to compress an individual's torso in any fashion, again, unless preventing bodily harm or death. This would include a bear hug, briefly holding an individual against a wall, or similar techniques. This limitation now takes away our newest and lowest level of control that's been implemented for resistive individuals where an officer gets behind a combative person and circles their arms around the individual's waist and simply hangs on until help arrives. This was created and adopted under tactical and medical research as being a low level of control best implemented to avoid the officer being punched, kicked, or bit, well, until additional officers can arrive and safely control the person. A third limitation removes the ability of an officer to straddle an individual to control them. This literally translates into prohibiting an officer from stepping over or standing over to restrain a combative individual, techniques that also may be needed for controlling a combative person. A fourth limitation removes the ability of an officer to put pressure on a student's head or neck. This removes the ability for an officer to apply a brief, often single finger pressure point technique to distract and gain control of an individual. Most common pressure point techniques are located near the ear, under the jaw, collarbone area, and are away from the airway. The statute is quite clear on a number of prohibitions that have always been in effect for our agency and fall into the common sense category, not restricting the student's ability to breathe, not placing pressure on their throat, chest, diaphragm, or impairing their ability to communicate. We have always agreed and abided by restrictions of that type, especially in situations that are not required to prevent bodily injury or death. Because of the newly, newly discovered statutory language and the request for clarification, the Minnesota Attorney General was asked to provide their interpretation of the statutes. This also caused a several-day delay until those interpretations were presented. In the end, the Attorney General gave his opinion on some of the restraint issues but left many unanswered questions from law enforcement. We note that the Attorney General gives interpretations and opinions on laws, but Minnesota courts provide the full context and rulings on those same laws. The Attorney General stated that several gray areas and areas of confusion would need to be resolved by the legislature or tested through the courts. I stand before you to state that our agency does not want to be a test case or subject to case law in this area. Not only does the City of Willmer and the Willmer Police Department fall into areas of liability, but individual officers stand the chance of individual liability, sanctions or revocations to their police officer license, discipline, dismissal, or worst-case scenario, criminal liability, and imprisonment depending on their actions. Needless to say, that is a heavy burden for our SRO staff or any officers to carry. The results of the legislation is creating a second standard for our SROs when functioning in the schools with students or even school events when being paid through school district contract. This would include dances and football games containing a mix of students and adults and including students from other districts. Now, an officer as an agent of the school would need to try and quickly sort out these issues in potentially high-stress and rapidly changing and dynamic scenarios. While the Attorney General offered an opinion and untested through the courts that higher levels of control may be used on individuals to prevent bodily harm or death, there is no authorization or allowance for those techniques to be used to control individuals that our SROs commonly encounter, such as those actively damaging property, trespassing, mere threats of violence, students under the influence of narcotics, or suffering from violent mental episodes or outbursts. Our goal is always de-escalation and handling situations with the lowest level of control as possible. The new legislation takes away a few of our lowest and safest levels of control in those situations that could keep them from escalating higher with the potential of injuries to the individual, the officers, and others. Officers are forced in many situations to make rapid decisions with limited information in the most sound manner possible. The removal of options from our SRO staff and potential confusion and conflicting standards for those SROs or anyone who fills in for them could lead to hesitation when action is needed and higher levels of force when less could have been used earlier. The Willmer Police Department has a contract, has had a contract with the Willmer School District stemming back to 1994, and we greatly value the partnership that we've had to this point. Our agency strongly recognizes that being allowed in the schools is an important part of establishing relationships early and continually with students and staff that promote problem-solving, crime prevention, mutually beneficial communications, and goodwill. We also recognize that the presence of a uniform officer can help deter violence and crime. The safety and security of people in our community, especially our students, is of utmost importance that would never be used as a political tool. On August 28th, Captain Anderson and I met with Superintendent Holm and Superintendent Adams to discuss, Assistant Superintendent Adams, to discuss a mutual contract suspension that had the backing of the city administrator and city attorney. In short, we were asking the school to please not pay us, so remove the agent of the district status, and we could still provide the SRO services to the school with our SROs retaining their full law enforcement authority. I did note that in the absence of the school reimbursing the cost of three and three-quarter dedicated officers to the city, that we would likely need to reassess the number of dedicated hours in the future. It was fully explained that we would not leave the schools unprotected, would not discontinue many support and educational programs, and the visibility of the SRO program would largely go unnoticed. We left that meeting believing we had a mutual agreement and that the city and school attorney would be drafting that agreement. The following day, we were notified that the school district would not allow that type of agreement and expected the city to follow through on our contract through the completion of the end of the 2023-2024 school year. Additional discussions, once successfully and regretfully, I bring to you tonight the recommendation to start the process of contract termination. We feel that in the absence of an immediate contract suspension, it is necessary to do so to provide the best services and safety we can to the public and best protect our officers. We know that the schools strongly value the SROs and work and the work they do for the students and staff alike. SROs are advocates for all inside the school walls. They provide counseling assistance, education on laws and individual responsibility, drug and violence prevention, and more. We now have SROs that approach their position with a level of anxiety and apprehension. A couple longstanding SROs have inquired about moving to different assignments where they're not at such personal risk or liability. There's concern that the school district does not back them. These comments and feelings from my staff are very concerning to me and should be to you also. It's with reluctance that I recommend that the City of Willmer start the termination process of the current school resource officer agreement. By doing so, this ensures that SROs will retain their full police authorities and abilities to provide the best services and safety to the students. We intend to keep our SROs in the schools as long as the school will allow. However, there may be some modifications that will be very strategic, measured, and communicated to the school with safety at the forefront. We remain fully committed to the safety of all students, faculty, and staff throughout the process. Thank you for your consideration, and I guess at this time, I would stand for any questions.
Councilmember office.
Okay. Obviously, I'm on both sides of this. I was part of the original 1994 contract that started the SROs, and I supervised the SROs for over 20 years. If, so the school didn't want to go along with canceling the contract. Okay, so if we vote to cancel it tonight, then there won't be any SROs in the schools?
No. The, the plan is originally, our original intent and request to them was a suspension of the contract. So basically, a mutual agreement to put it on hold until legislation got worked out or whatever the case may be, and then hopefully reenact it to its full status after that. What the, what the request is tonight is that to start the termination process, there's a 90-day clause in the contract that the school expects us to, in that process, if agreed upon, that we honor the contract for 90 days. My intent, and has been all along, that even at the end of 90 days, we're still going to have officers in the schools. We're still going to provide the core services that they need, still be highly visible, protect the staff and students, provide the educational programming. But the only thing that, that I had, the discussions were right from the beginning is that since you're not paying, you know, for three and three-quarters officers' time, we're probably going to have to assess the number of dedicated hours that we spend there. So instead of having three and three-quarter officers there, eight hours a day, we're probably going to have to do some modifications on that.
Okay.
If that makes sense.
Yes.
Okay.
So even if Governor Walz calls for a special session, then we would relook at the contract depending on what would come out of that?
It would be my intent that depending on what comes out, if there is a special session, what comes out of it, the timeliness of everything is, you know, could be to enter into contract talks to, since this contract, as I understand it, would no longer be valid, we'd have to kind of start from scratch again. It would be fully my intent to do another partnership with the school if we can find common ground.
Okay. So if, if we keep the officers in the school, then we're going to bill them for the hours? No.
No.
Okay. I was going to say, what's the difference between us billing them and if the whole thing was we're not under contract with them?
Right.
But, okay.
As I understand it, the, the payment for officers' time is the designating factor for agent of the school. That's why, as weird as it was to ask him, I said, please don't pay us, and we'll still do the job for you. We'll just have to reevaluate how much we do in the future, so.
Okay. I do, I just, my, I do think that this is an overreaction of the George Floyd incident. And so when I've had principals and other people that have talked to me about this issue and they said, and I said, a lot of it has to do with the prone. I said, that's how they get handcuffed? And they said, well, can't they get them in a sitting or a semi-sitting position to handcuff? I said, not when they're swinging and fighting. And there's, the only way that you can bring somebody's hands behind their back is, is from a prone position to get them under control so they don't hurt themselves or hurt somebody else. That's the kicker. And, and the, and where, how open we are leaving our school resource officers for liability. So, thank you for all your work on this.
Thank you. Thank you.
I, I've got Councilmember Sheldus and O'Brien that want to speak, but I asked Dave Baker to be here tonight mostly because of what you just talked about, the possibility of coming together and altering the, the action by the legislature. Do you want to say anything, Dave? Do you have anything that?
Mr. Mayor, thank you, and Councilmembers and Officer Chief Feld. I've been spending a lot of time talking to our folks in the area regarding this issue, and I just want to say I'm sorry. I'm sorry that we're standing in front of you wasting a lot of time on this issue, and it should have never gotten to this point, but it did. We have asked the governor to call a special session. We'll help fix this quickly. It's a, it's a mistake. I don't think the idea was to try to make it harder for officers. Certainly, you didn't want to hurt the amazing officers in the Wilmer School District specifically in the great work that they have done. Kids don't want to see the officers not in the school. I think what Chief Feld has done, along with our superintendents in Wilmer, they're great dancers right now. They're trying to make this work to keep the presence in school. I will tell you, just a few minutes before this meeting started, I talked to my leader, Leader Lisa Dameth. She's been having some conversations. I am optimistic this will happen. A special session is very likely. Can't predict that. I'm not the governor. But if they call us back to session, we will get right to work and fix it quickly so that all of this can be put to bed. I encourage your decision to be based on the officers' desires to make sure that the kids are safe, staff is safe, the relationships get built, but we just can't take that risk of the officers reacting in a way that they're used to acting, and then the law can get in the way of unintended consequences. So I appreciate being asked to be here tonight, Mr. Mayor, and again, I am optimistic we will get this fixed. This is, this is, there was, there was many mistakes made during sessions that happens in all other sessions. This one just can't wait. We need to fix this right now. We can't wait till we come back in February. So I certainly have urged the governor as well to make this change. If we can do anything with our city leadership here is, I would urge a letter to the four caucus leaders, the two in the House, two in the Senate, and the governor, to please call a special session so we can put this behind us. But I think tonight's decision needs to be one based on, you know, protecting that long-term relationship that Chief Feld has brought to you tonight. So again, I appreciate the opportunity to speak, and I'll continue to listen to the needs of our kids.
Dave, are you, are you thinking possibly, just possibly, it'd be this fall, though?
I don't know how it can't be this fall, Mr. Mayor. I think it's going to happen in the next week or two. I mean, at least he'll call it. I don't know how long it takes to get it rolling. I, I'm urging that every day. I don't know how we cannot do this. And especially with some of the comments today by the governor, I think he's leaning to say there are too many districts pulling out. There's just too much gray area. Some people might interpret this differently, but the Attorney General didn't help by having some gray area there. And city attorneys, the police attorneys are saying there's too much, there's too much gray. We have to get this right, and I think, I think in this case, nobody wants to see the contract go away. I think what's being done is doing the best, the best hybrid that I can think of is they're still there, but not under contract. And that shows a lot of faith between both organizations. And I think that's the best for the kids and best for the parents. I hope that enough pressure gets put on leadership. It will come back, and it'll get changed quickly. That is what I hope happens.
And it's best for our officers.
Absolutely. That's, that's best.
Protecting them.
Yes. You won't have any SROs in the road, in the future if something bad happens to any one of them in the state. So it's a real problem.
All right. Well, thank you, Dave.
Dave, just one, one second, Dave. I spoke with you the other day with my concerns on this. You told me there was like 40 to 50 cities already looking at terminating this?
So far, there's been 45 that has suspended their contracts.
Okay. I just wanted you to address the whole council on that, so they knew that other cities were moving forward with this?
And again, as I shared with you, Councilmember Butterfield, I think not knowing where it's going to start and stop, I was just texting our friends up at New Lenin Spicer. I'm not sure if they made a decision, but I was literally in the conversation with the superintendent and the sheriff's office, and they're having these same exact conversations. They don't exactly know what to do. They, whatever they do will not be putting students at risk. They will be, if it's not inside the building like Chief Feld is doing, they're going to be right outside the building. They're going to be there, ready to stand by if there's any issues. But then they come in under, under no contract, and their, their actions can be done a little bit differently. Bottom line is, there's not a single person working on this that does not put the safety of the students first and, and the staff. So that is something that, to me, shouts gratitude and the years of relation-building between each organization. And the kids, when they show up at school, don't want to not see those officers there. They love them. And then the other day on a houseboat, I saw a seventh grader in Wilmer High School, or the Wilmer Middle School, and I was bringing this up because he was extremely inquisitive and asking a lot of different questions about my job and how I do this. And, you know, we're doing, we're talking about this thing right now with police officers. Do you, what do you think about having the police officer in the school? He, he literally, he was stunned by my asking the question. Would you mind if they were there or didn't mind? Or, I wasn't trying to make an alarm for him, but he was shocked that even anybody would consider that. I love the officer at the middle school. Just loves him. And so I hope that we continue this work, and students will be grateful if we can work through this behind the scenes and not have to deal with this. But a lot of folks are kind of having to make this tough decision right now. And I'm, again, I'm sorry you're all dealing with this when we shouldn't have to. There's other important things to deal with. But I will do everything I can to represent our county, our city, to make sure that our leadership, including my own, does everything we can to get this resolved quickly. So not another day or another week, another month goes by to say, "Who's going to do what if something happens?" It's too important.
Yeah. Thank you, Dave.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I think we've got a good plan here.
You've got the best, you've got the best chief in the world right here. I'm telling you, he's amazing, and I, I call him often to get advice about public safety stuff, and I think that he's doing everything he can to make this work for everybody, so.
Thanks, Dave.
Appreciate being asked. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Sheldus.
So Chief Feld, my question would be, worst-case, contract terminates, SROs are still in the building. What, what kind of role do you see them having then if they're not? I know agents of the school is kind of the sticking point that really restricts things. If they're there not as agents of the school, how does that look?
It looks exactly the same as the last day of school last year, all the authorities and the abilities that they, they had then. You know, it all comes down to the financial portion of it. And again, I'm not throwing this on the council. If the council is willing to pick up the entire tab for the, what the school had been paying for the same services there, we're more than happy to provide it, but that's a big ask of, of the city, too. So I thought it was only fair, when we were suddenly having to do these, these discussions, to say, "Because you're not paying the, that dollar amount, we may have to adjust hours" or something like that, but in a strategic way. So, if that makes sense. But once they're no longer agents of the school after 90 days of a contract termination, you know, or however, then it'd be the same as everything they did last year.
Councilmember O'Brien.
I've been in schools for going on 15 years. We had a lot of school groups come to our school board and just accolades for the SROs, you know? "Boy, we're so glad you're here." I heard that so many times. I also worked eight years with special ed, helping special ed. I drove special ed vehicles. I can tell you, I don't know where these people are coming from, but I like to have them following me around in some of this stuff. It took three of us, 13-year-old punched out a teacher. It took three of us to take him down. Okay? You're not just dealing with a 13-year-old, by the way. And the other thing is, you know what's been so tough on our, to get law enforcement officers? I mean, it's really difficult for you to find applicants right now. Our schools, our law enforcement schools are at the lowest numbers they've been in, I don't know, since the beginning. And now this? What are they thinking? What is going on? Like I say, if it's not broke, don't fix it, right? What's wrong with these people? I have just absolutely so much to say about law enforcement and schools and all the kids that came up to me when I was on the school boards. They just raved about you guys, "So glad you're there," right? And then they do this? I just don't get it. I mean, it's just absolutely, there's no rhyme or reason for this. And so I just pray for a special session, and soon. This is absolutely ridiculous. All they did is add another thorn to, anybody that wants to go into law enforcement is going to think twice. This is not good.
Councilmember Nelson.
Councilmember Ask was before me. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chief, I can't help but think about back when I was in school and the relationship I had with the officer. I think when I was growing up, I would see someone with a uniform like that, I would immediately trust you. I knew you were a safe person that I could come to, and it, it distresses me that that's not a universal truth anymore. I think there's a lot of people that see it in a uniform like that and now have questions in their mind. And I just want to say some things that have already been echoed here that I think you and your department are phenomenal. I think you've built a lot of capital. You've stood in this room many times in the last two years that I've been here and talked about how the relationship that this city has with its police officers is so much better than other places throughout the state. And so thank you, and thank you to every officer and the SROs that have helped build that. I'm also distressed about the situation before us, and I wonder what happens to some of that capital that we've built up over the time. Today was the first day of school, so I'm kind of curious. Give us an update. What happened today?
Thankfully, nothing really of note, except we had to take some, some measures to try and limit some of the liability of, of our officers or things, positions that they could be put in. So some things that we did, some instructions were sent to our SROs and to school, the school administrators, to disseminate as quickly as possible this morning, some things like, you know, our, limiting our officers to things that deal with criminal conduct or violation of statute, our city ordinance, and not school code of conduct issues, you know, that type of thing. We wanted to provide high visibility. We wanted people to definitely know that we are there and that we are going to continue to be there and provide for their safety. But if nothing else, through all these discussions that we've had to have quickly over this last week, I've learned that the SROs have absorbed duties that I didn't realize that they, you know, a ton of duties that aren't necessarily law enforcement-related that probably we're going to have to reevaluate, too. You know, we've actually had an SRO that was apparently put in charge of a school for a while while all the school officials were gone, which I don't think should be the case. But, you know, so today, we had some school officials that either they didn't know some of those new restrictions, or, you know, or forgot, or were just maybe testing the waters, you know, asked our officers to do a few things, and they politely said, you know, "Right at this time, we're not allowed to. Come 90 days if the contract is terminated, we can go back to the, the old way." But right now, we're really trying to limit that. Another thing is that a patrol officer, if they encounter, say you've got a, somebody that's of student age that rushes into a school, goes past the front doors, you know, gets it through the front doors, is making a beeline to the classroom, they haven't, you know, committed bodily harm or death on anybody, but certainly it's concerning behavior. And right now, our officer would not be able to use a control measure on them other than stop, or else they stop again. And to get them under control, obviously, we want to try and control that. They can call a patrol officer in, and they can take care of the situation using all the regular techniques, but now that even the SRO can't participate in that. So my fear there is that we're going to tie up additional street officers doing SRO work when normally it could, it could have been handled just by the SRO, too.
Okay. I'm also kind of wondering, from what you've presented here tonight, I'm having a hard time understanding why the school district would decline the offer that you made. And I've heard it talked about in a couple different ways. One time, it sounded like you were suspending the contract, and then I think one time you said that you were basically just saying, "Don't pay us, and it'll be business as usual." Can you speak more to both, clarify what it is that was, that the city proposed to the school, and any indication why the school said no?
Yeah. The proposal to them was, under the guidance of the, the city attorney, was a suspension of the contract, a formal written pause, I guess you could say, and that would especially include payment to the, the city for services, thus taking away the agent of the district status. When we had our one-on-one discussions with the superintendent and assistant superintendent, you know, they obviously had some concerns. We felt we addressed those. We addressed our concerns to them. We thought that they understood. With all apologies to Mr. Scott here, attorneys got involved, and our attorneys did a wonderful job, but for some reason, the school attorney would, and the school then was not agreeable to the, the terms, so.
Mr. Scott, have you had conversations with the school attorney that you could maybe give us further insight about why it is that this suspension is not acceptable to the school?
Mayor, members of the council, our office has had several conversations with the attorney for the school district. Just a couple things I think I want to make sure everyone understands. The contract does not have like a unilateral right for the city to suspend, so in order to do that, you needed agreement from the school district. So that was the meeting that Chief Feld described where he made that request. The school district's attorney just communicated that the school has a contract with the city, and they expect the city to honor it. So at that point, we were asked to look at the city's options under the contract, and it's really limited to the right that either party to that contract has to terminate on 90 days' notice. So that's the action, obviously, that's recommended of the council tonight, is to approve giving that notice to the school district. What that will mean is that for 90 days, the contract will remain in effect until the effective date of termination. During that time, the city's SROs in the school will be operating under these more restrictive standards that the legislature enacted. So now there'll be two sets of standards for city police officers, those who are SROs and those who are not. And obviously, Chief Feld has given his opinion, which I defer to, about whether that's a workable situation or not. And lots of chiefs around the city, or, excuse me, around the state are having the same, probably agonizing assessments of whether they can make it work or not. Some, many are recommending similar courses of action, and now that some have worked out arrangements with the school district to suspend the agreement. I guess what I would also want the council to understand is that either under a suspension or post-termination of this contract, the key thing there will be, at that point, it's not that, as we understand from Chief Feld's intentions with Wilmer's department, it's not that law enforcement will not respond to the school or even have officers assigned to the school. Legally, the key is obviously not being paid, but this is not going to be a contractual commitment for the city. Any assignments of officers, direction of their activities will be made by Chief Feld on behalf of the city, not because of a contractual commitment to the school district. And Chief Feld, like I think every department we've dealt with, has no intention of leaving the schools to fend for themselves. They will continue, and everyone universally has expressed the opinion that they want to continue supporting the schools as, as best they can. But that would be a Chief Feld-directed decision, either while the agreement were suspended, if that were ever to happen, or under contract termination after the effective date of termination.
And this termination is in hopes of a session to address this.
I think just to conclude my comments here tonight, I know that there's other cities around the state that have looked at different options as well and haven't terminated contracts. I appreciate the new directives that you've come up with to kind of make best of the current situation. And I think recognizing what I would, not just to flatter you, but really think is your extraordinary leadership and the relationship that you've built in the community, the police department has with the schools, I'd rather not the council be left in a situation where I feel like tonight I'm asked to vote between fully protecting our law enforcement officers and fully- and fully protecting our children. I'm just wondering, we meet again in two weeks, is there not a chance that we can table this for two weeks and in that time, you go back to the negotiating table with the school district to come up with, with some kind of an agreement? Representative Baker goes back to St. Paul, I think we're all hoping for that, right? I mean, I feel like we're going to know so much more in two weeks, I'd love to have another shot with the school district. It seems very strange to me from what I've heard from both of you tonight that they'd be in a absolutely not, we're not agreeing to anything scenario. And if we're in the same situation, two weeks from now, maybe then we can move to terminate and start that 90-day clock. But that's where I'm at tonight.
All right, I have Nelson, Osmus, Sholdas.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor Reese. I'm going on the same line where Councilmember Osk is. My question to you was, if you already have some procedures in place, you're asking us to terminate and continue to work with, would it hurt for us to wait two weeks that you could just do those procedures two weeks longer? Representative Baker suggested that we send the letters, you know, to that and we continue to work with the school district to come up with a, with a resolution that would work. We also have public safety aid money that's coming for the city to use. If you need to allocate more funds, as you've offered to do that, I would be supportive of us looking at what do we need to do to keep this together? And I hate to see us use the word terminate, and I think the letter from Dr. Holm expressed concern about, about that also, and to find a way to amend this and put it back, put it back together with that. And so, I, I'm just asking, and I think our city attorney kind of clarified the difference between some of those things, would it hurt for us to wait two weeks and provide the direction that we want to work together and we're asking for help to keep this contract together? And, and I'm supportive of us looking at what money do we need to do to keep your officers there and fully staffed, because I think their presence at football games and those types of things are critical to the community and it also sends a message, I think that we want to be supportive with that. So, that's where I'm at. I think it's in a similar vein with what was just said, so.
If I could comment on that, I, I understand where you're coming from, but the best thing you can do to help the Wilmer Police Department is to terminate this contract. Right now, our police officers, this is day one, we had to put some emergency measures into place for day one of the high school and middle school. And I've got school resource officers that are extremely anxious about serving in any capacity in the school as SROs right now. And to move this further down the line, already they know that if it is the formal termination agreement, or the vote happens tonight, they still have to be nervous for the next 90 days while they're operating in the schools. If they leave and we replace them with another officer, boom, that officer all of a sudden becomes the agent of the school and they have to adapt to new, to new procedures and everything. Truly, the best thing you could do for our department is to terminate this contract as quickly as possible. We would gladly renegotiate a new contract. Right now, you know, the governor has indicated some willingness to possibly do a session. That's not a guarantee it's going to happen, we don't have any timeframes on that, we don't know the outcome or the discussions that are come out of that. I am more than willing to, to meet with the school if things, when things are done, to work something out. This is not a walking away from the school. The school has made some assumptions of that and some statements to that effect, that the students will probably never notice any difference whatsoever in SRO coverage. Staff will maybe notice just a very small change in what, what we, we hope to do, and especially once we get our, our full law enforcement powers back, it's almost as if nothing happened.
So, further clarification, so if we terminate the contract tonight and two weeks from now, you've come up with a resolution, this contract is still terminated, we'd have to do a new contract, or could we cancel the termination?
That I would probably pose to Attorney Scott if that's a possibility.
I think that, Mayor, council, the answer is anything's possible with agreement of the school district, but by giving notice of termination, that action is legally significant and it will result in the termination of the contract in 90 days. That's not to say you can't, if you have a partner to work with still, have a new agreement that you negotiate, or if the issue is resolved through a special session and you want to just reinstate the old agreement, get agreement to do that. But without that agreement, once the notice of termination is sent, that's again legally significant and that will result in the termination in 90 days.
Councilmember Osmus.
Okay. So, trying to clarify, best-case scenario for the officers to be able to use their full powers would have been if the school would have agreed to the suspension?
Correct.
They didn't.
Correct.
So now, if we vote to terminate, that's going to take 90 days. Councilmember Peterson asked, the other question I was going to ask is, let's say, the school after, if we make a vote to terminate?
Nelson.
What did I say, Peterson? Sorry, Nelson. I was going to say Audrey. I didn't want to do that. So, now you lost me. But, so, if they'll get the clear message tonight, if we were to vote to terminate, that the best thing for the officers to be able to do what they do is to have a suspension. That would be the immediate way to give them the powers they need, correct? And that could still happen, but we will still terminate in 90 days, correct?
Uh, just Mayor, councilmembers, I'm, I think the answer is correct, that the department's preference has always been to do this with mutual agreement of the school district and have a mutual suspension in place. When that, when those efforts failed, then the assessment was the next thing the city has to do was to send the notice of termination.
Okay.
That would make effect in 90 days.
My feeling, my feeling is that maybe there was some miscommunication or misinterpretation that they thought if we paused it, the officers wouldn't be in the school. There, there was a clear understanding with the school that the officers would be there.
Absolutely clear. If anything else is said by any member of the school, I will stand in front of them and say that is wrong. We absolutely told them that we will be there and you will see us every day.
Okay, I was hoping that a termination vote tonight might flip that, okay.
That, that's why this is so disappointing to bring in front of you, because
Yeah, okay.
That, this, I would gladly get back into a new agreement with the school. We are not going to abandon the schools, but the stance the school has taken has really limited us. They talk about how much they love their SROs, yet they are not protecting them like they need to be protected.
Okay.
Okay, councilmembers, bear with me, I've got Sholdas, Davis, Nelson, Butterfield. So, Sholdas.
So, having worked at Wilmer Senior High for 32 years and 25 of those years with an SRO, I can say I would not want to work in a school without an SRO. And I hate the idea that they have to question, what can I do, what can't I do? And I would hate to see something happen because they have to hesitate, and I know that's just not good for anybody in that situation. I'm thinking the best thing we can do is to vote to terminate this contract, to put pressure on the governor and the leadership at the state, that this, we need to meet and get this figured out and get this fixed. The, the more school districts that do that, I think the more pressure there's going to be for them to call a special session and say, "Let's correct this problem." And then maybe in the meantime, you can work out some of those other issues that, I agree, an SRO should not be in charge of this school, that, that's why we have administrators there. So, I guess I would be in favor of voting to terminate.
Councilmember Davis.
Yeah, I think we should go ahead with a termination tonight too. I want to thank you for all of your work on this, I know it's been really hard and I appreciate the officers that we have in our schools and I think by waiting for two more weeks, that just sends a message that, you know, we don't respect them like we should. And I wouldn't want to work there under these circumstances either, so.
Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you, Mayor Reese. I wanted to just follow up with what Councilmember Osmus said. I want to go back to the two weeks. So, if we wait two weeks and we, as the city council, ask the school board to consider a suspension versus a termination and see if we can't work through how that might work for the school and work for us, I think we have the right to ask them. I just, I just don't want us to terminate this contract. And I don't want it to be political and I don't want, I think we have, we have credibility to lose with the community, I've gotten phone calls about it too. I think we need to do our best to try to work through this and what if we tried that? What if we went back to them and said, "The council is asking you not to terminate, but to do a suspension so that this can work," and then figure out what to do next?
Councilmember Butterfield.
Well, I'm in favor with what Dave Baker suggested to me on the phone call, was go ahead with termination. Jim Felton, you know, I've known you for 30-some years. I'm backing Jim on this, go, go with the termination. We're going to still have our police officers at the school. What this is going to do is going to limit the liability if one of them steps up, does something wrong, now the children's parents can sue that officer, sue the city, and the school's left out and it's all going to fall back on us taxpayers. We have to protect everybody. We're going to still have police at schools, correct?
Correct.
Okay, now we're just taking away the liability from the officer being personally being fired from it, right, correct? Would that's what's going?
Yep, one of the possibilities, correct.
Of the job? We have to watch out for everybody and if we have to step up and pay for 100% for the police, I'm all for that to have the police there.
Councilmember Osk.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't really want to wait on St. Paul, all respect to Mr. Baker, but gosh, I'd like to figure this out in Wilmer, and I think that's the best chance. And so I think regardless of the outcome tonight, I'm very much in agreement with Councilmember Nelson, I'd really like the school board to respond to this. Us as a city council reaching out specifically to them saying, "We need a suspension, we need changes to this agreement or we will terminate in two weeks," and giving the school board a chance to respond to that. But if that doesn't happen, if we do terminate tonight, again, like, my hope would be, and I, I think I know you well enough to know that you're not going to sit around and, and wait on St. Paul either, but I would sure hope that there'd be continued conversation and again, we'd figure this out in Wilmer before the legislature's going to be able to, to give us an answer. I think we need the legislature to act quickly and that's probably going to be the final answer for the long-term solution, but coming up with a short-term solution in the meantime seems vitally important.
Councilmember Fager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We didn't create this situation, that's the state's fault. We have to listen to our professional police officer here, we have to protect our officers. Something could happen in the next 10 days to one of our officers, they could lose their license, they could be put in jail, you know, I don't want that to happen. I think it's best to terminate, send a letter to the state that we're really upset about this, and hopefully more school districts cancel theirs, so there isn't any more SROs in the schools, so the state can think about this. One question I have, are SROs, are they specifically named in the contract or the city of Wilmer will provide one for senior high, middle school and grade school?
Correct, it, it does not name them specifically in the contract, it just says full-time off, there's three full-time officers, one three-quarter time officer, and then we make the assignment internally on our department based on their training, experience, send them to additional training and things like that. So, so the way it stands now is we have four specific officers that have the title of SRO, like as I explained a little bit earlier, if one is gone and we replace with another officer, a detective or something in the high school, suddenly they get the SRO designation or an, an agent of the, the district designation under the contract, so. So then they have to have a switch of mindset on what they can do and what they can't in any given situation.
Okay, so if the SRO needs help, he can call another officer?
They can call another officer, but the SRO may not be able to participate if there's a struggle going on or something like that, which is an awful feeling for an officer too, so.
That makes no sense, I mean, they're there to protect. How about after-school activities, football games, dances, are the SROs assigned to that then too, or is it the regular police force?
Typically, what the school has done is they've contracted for extra officers for, let's say for the homecoming game, maybe three officers or something like that. Under these rules, if we accept payment for those officers, then they are agents of the school, then anybody that could be a student in there, whether from our school or another, magically falls under this, this law. So, that's more confusion and I relate to the schools that at the time being, we are not able to accept payment for any extra officers for those extra activities.
So if a new contract is written, you'll change that, so the extra officers won't be considered SROs?
If I, when a new contract, and I think a new contract is in order and I hope one is in order, it would depend on legislative changes and everything, but certainly would work to, to draft out with the city attorney, we want to keep providing those extra services. We like getting reimbursed for them if possible, but just, we want to make sure that, that we're able to provide the same service and everybody retains their full law enforcement authority.
I don't really want to do it, but I'll make a motion to terminate this contract.
Second? Here we go, a motion and a second to terminate the contract. Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you, Mayor Reese. Can the, the word of the words in that motion follow what the recommendation action was? Because it, it clearly states there to continue to work with the school district to reach a new agreement.
The chief already said they were going to.
I just want our motion to include that.
I'll make that in the motion then.
To follow that, what, what the recommended action was?
Fine. Yep.
Is that a second?
Yeah, I'm fine. Yes. Yes.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. No further discussion, go ahead and vote.
Waiting on Councilmember Osk. Sholdas, Nelson, and O'Brien, do you guys want to do voice votes?
Mine timed out.
You might have to refresh, just refresh your screens maybe.
I did.
We'll do a voice vote, Councilmember Osk.
He's thinking.
Yeah, my screen's actually working. Aye.
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 Nelson?
No.
O'Brien?
Aye.
That motion carries seven ayes, one knee.
All right, Rick?
One thing, Mr. Mayor, who's going to write the letter to the governor and Attorney General?
Mayor, members of the council, I assume that will be something our office will draft pursuant to the direction of the council.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Well, we'll be sending that to all the four recommendations for what Dave said to the House Majority Senate. Governor and who else, Dave, there was one more, wasn't there?
There was one more, wasn't there?
Again, Mayor, members of the council, that may be a second letter we can certainly help the city with, if that's the staff and council's desire.
My request was the same thing, to make sure that we do what Representative Baker asked us to do, is do the four different leadership positions.
No, what?
I couldn't hear what Audrey had said.
Well, she, she's just...
Okay.
Same thing as Councilmember Butterfield.
Yeah, just to send to the four leadership positions.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. I know it was an incredibly difficult question to ask, a difficult for everyone to consider here. I appreciate your support of the department. I appreciate the kind words tonight, but it's the people that I work with, but thank you for sticking up for them. I'm proud to be among them, and thank you again for your time. My next questions of you will be easier, like squad cars or something like that in the future.
All right. Thank you, chief. Thank you for your leadership. I know Councilmember Butterfield wants to address something, but can we take a break?
Yep.
And come back?
Yes.
All right, let's take a break.
I want to...
Yeah, but why don't we do community pride?
Should we do the last mail? What you wrote off? I just thought you should have made...
I don't need this.
Yeah, we don't need this. There's nothing on.
I don't feel so bad.
I went in and...
All right, Councilmember Butterfield?
Well, this asks, go back on the City Hall, you know, sites. I know when we voted the other week to, you know, not move forward with the Tom Mall project, I knew we were going to have more people coming up with more ideas, everything else like that. I've gotten an email this past week, emailing one of our constituents in Wilmer over and over and over again. He would like for the city council to attain Prospect Park north of the Walmart as a spot for City Hall. I am not in favor for this. I don't think it would be a good fit for out there, but he asked me to have the city consider that spot for City Hall.
That's an old dump. We cannot, we cannot cultivate turn soil. We can't do anything out there. That's totally out of the question.
Yep. Totally agree. But it was asked over and over again. I'm just bringing stuff up that our citizens want us to talk about, and I've been doing this, asking for years, or for over a year on a lot of stuff, and it doesn't get up. So now I guess that then means I'm going to have to be doing this if I can't get it on the agenda.
All right. Our next agenda item, the closed meeting pursuant to Minnesota Statute 13D.05 subdivision three C, the following real property will be discussed separately in closed session, parcel 959215710. I need a motion to close the meeting. So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Closed. The council is now in closed session pursuant to Minnesota Statute 13D.5 subdivision three C. The time is 8:34 PM. In addition to city council also present in the closed session, our Leslie Valiant City Administrator Judy Thompson, City Clerk Kyle Box, Operations Director Tom Odens, Finance Director Robert Scott, City Attorney.
Yes.
Mayor Bachman, Director...
Michael, and Michael Schram.
Michael Schram.
Santo Cruz, Attorney for Center Care, and Joe Helly, Center Care.
All right. This meeting must be tape-recorded. The minutes of this portion of the meeting should reflect only that a meeting was held on this agenda item with its date, time, and location, who was present, and the purpose of the meeting. I will now call on staff to lead the discussion. City staff introduction of the agenda item.